We're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to our October 11th board meeting. We have everyone here in attendance, and I'd like to ask if you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Just before we get started, I know that Dr. Muslin, you had already mentioned in workshop that this is your last meeting. You might have been a little bit happy about it, but I just wanted to say, you know, on behalf of the Board, you know, not knowing what to expect with an interim superintendent coming in, whether it was somebody that was just going to sit and collect a paycheck and keep the feet warm, which we might have said that might, you didn't have a lot to do over the summer, might have said that. But anybody who has met you now and who knows you now knows that you don't sit. You jump in with two feet, ready to go. So I just want to say thank you to you for the leadership, the guidance that you brought to us. I have had, we've had a lot of time to work together, and I'm very grateful that you were sitting in the seat for this time. And I'm sad to see you go, but really, the only thing that makes us feel a little bit better is that we have Dr. Mayon over here, who is, you know, going to be here. So this is, I think this is, the future is bright for Southernly High. You helped us so much in your four months, a lot. So thank you. And so we have a little swag bag here for, with some Southernly High gear for you. So that you can remember. You can open it later.
(inaudible).
So.
Oh, wait, there's a lot of stuff.
Just things that you can, you know, remember us, remind us, you know, remember us.
Phil, that could be the golf. Right there, there we go. You got that for golf. There's other things in here, huh? Oh, man, that's really cool. That's really cool. I like that. Yeah. Oh, man, I could always use a lug. When I get to the beach, that could come with me, and I will have water in.
Water, water, yeah.
Oh, wow. It's.
Yeah, so really, you've been, you've been fantastic. And like, we are going to miss you, but we are looking forward to Dr. Mayon, too.
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, yes, yes, you are. Yes, you are.
Thank you very much. It was an honor to be here.
Okay. Moving on to visitor comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments are to provide input to the Board on items that are before us to vote. Speakers must be district residents and sign in. Because this is a business meeting, there will not be a response period from the Board. We ask that comments be directed to the Board, refrain from offensive language, and you may not yield your time to a speaker that has already utilized their three minutes. And we have three people signed in this evening. First one is Mr. Douglas Durham.
Thank you. I want to thank Dr. Muslin as well. He's always been responsive to community concerns. It has been probably always been pleasant, but it's appreciated that you have been responsive to our concerns.
Thank you, Douglas. It's been a pleasure meeting, meeting you guys also. Thank you.
Good evening. I wanted to address several issues on the agenda this evening for consideration. On the issue of limiting of public comment to generally issued only in the initial public comment section, I ask the Board to promote the maximum opportunity for the community to voice their concerns and what we know is a timeless proposed change. After the last year of scandal and misconduct that has led to an independent investigation of Bishop, more opportunity for community expression is needed, not less. In that same vein, I ask the Board to reject the notion that the Board President has complete discretion to halt the meeting or remove a community member of their full discretion. Once again, that will not root through community trust regardless, regardless of who sits on the Board. I also continue to ask the Board to approve needed renovations to the middle school stadium. The field is not safe for athletes. The home stands are not safe for spectators, and the track is sorely in need of replacement. The several million dollars of cost is absolutely necessary to avoid unnecessary injury and potential litigation. Please consider alternate funding for these projects, including solicitation of corporate partners. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have is Mr. Glenn Lavery.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Lavery, and I would like to speak in favor of making the development of a diversity, equity, and inclusion program a priority for this district. I've heard many people speak at this podium attacking diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have heard many make these terms go undefined, but these principles have guided our treatment of students for decades. Equity is a fundamental principle of education, recognizing that students may require different resources to meet their full potential. We need to meet students where they are and identify what individuals need to learn best. I believe every child should have what they need to succeed. I believe every child should feel safe, welcome, and included in their school. I believe that every child's cultural experience should be reflected in the curriculum we teach and the ways we serve our students. In June, we heard from several students and parents about their firsthand experiences with racism and bullying in our schools. This is far from the first time we have heard of these issues in our schools. This is unacceptable and should learn every parent, teacher, and administrator. Some have suggested that the solution lies with simply punishing those who bully others, or that such matters are better left in the home. Let me be clear, these suggestions mean we will continue to ignore the real pain that many experience, and we are going to take no action toward meaningful change. We need all students and all families to feel welcome and safe in Southernly High's schools. Diversity benefits everyone in the community and prepares our students for a bold workforce. This district needs a diversity, equity, and inclusion program. We need to provide our teachers with the training they are asking to encourage critical thinking and empathy in our classrooms. We need adequate guidance staff to support children as they navigate these challenging issues. We need to help our children understand the meaning of their words and their actions so they can act with kindness and empathy towards their fellow students. We need to teach a full and complete history of America, including the times that we fell short of our ideals, so our children can build a better future. Make no mistake, this will be difficult, and at times it will be uncomfortable, but we cannot claim to support all students while we stand idle as some continue to be hurt by the words and actions of others. Please, make the adoption of a DEI program a priority for this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Nicole Dolan.
Compassion is a zero-sum resource. Hi, I'm Nicole Dolan. I'm a community member and have two kiddos in the district. I'm here to discuss the importance of introducing a diversity, equity, and inclusion staff training program for our district. The Board has heard some members of our community speak out against having a DEI program here. A common theme I have heard during such comments is a fear that students will be divided by race, labeled by their race, or shamed based on their race. I would first like to make clear that I also would be against such dividing, labeling, or shaming. But from my perspective, a DEI program at its core is about compassion, and the great thing about compassion is it is not a zero-sum resource. When a parent welcomes another child into their family, they don't have to love their first children less in order to love the newborn. Along the same vein, we as a community, as an administration, don't have to be unkind with some students in order to be kinder to students who are currently struggling. And their struggles aren't the current, they are happening now. Administrators have heard from such students, and this Board has heard from them, too. We cannot ignore their struggles or put off finding ways to support them because of a fear that a different group will be targeted instead. I've also heard from some comments that the issues we currently have in our district can be solved with reactive management, and then that's all that's needed. But to me, that would be like saying we don't need to address a learning disability until a child gets an F. Educators have known for a long time that noticing a problem early so that you can address it early is better for everyone in the long run, especially the student. Ignoring or missing the signs leads to a small, leads to small problems becoming bigger problems which are harder to tackle. DEI training is invaluable in helping teachers notice a problem and giving them the tools to effectively address them. There is limitless space in our hearts and our minds to care about every student in this district. There's no need to scapegoat any group of students. I would advocate that this Board and our administration can find a good program that will help teachers be better equipped to support their students, and I have complete faith in the wonderful compassionate teachers we have here that would use that training to support all schools. Diversity is not about dividing. Diversity is about honoring all the differences that already exist in our schools and our communities so that all students know their value. Equity is not about making all students valedictorian. Equity has been a longstanding practice in education. Students who are further behind might get more small group time when they're teacher than those who are growing on track, so that in the end, they all have a shot at being valedictorian. Inclusion is not about finding a different recruit's clue. Inclusion is about making sure all students feel safe and welcome in their own, in their own school, in their own community, so that when they are in these walls, they can focus on the primary goal of any district, which is getting a quality education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes visitor comment for this evening. So moving on to the executive session summary, Mr. Khan, who is our solicitor this evening, if you wouldn't mind announcing our executive sessions, please.
Certainly, there are several to announce. There was an executive session Thursday, August 26th, to discuss personnel. There was an executive session Monday, September 27th, also for personnel prior to the board meeting that evening. An executive session via Zoom on Monday, October 4th, for personnel, and an executive session immediately prior to this meeting, October 11th, to discuss both personnel and legal issues.
Mr. Khan, can I just ask you that first one that you announced in August?
Yes.
What was that? Which one was that?
That was our last one.
No, our last one was September 27th.
Oh, I'm sorry. September 27th. We got that one.
Okay, okay, okay. I was going to say, so we have, yep. So, thank you. Moving on to the approval of the Board minutes, please, from September 27th. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please? Are there any questions?
Kind of a comment and then a question. So I'm not going to be voting on these because I wasn't here, but in general, and maybe this goes under our workshop discussion, I think our minutes need to more appropriately reflect what was discussed and the detail of what was discussed at meetings. For instance, the September 13th meeting, there was a very, you know, important discussion that took place about an email that was through right to now, and none of that was in the minutes from September 13th that was approved at the last meeting. That's concerning, because we're not recording, we're not putting up on YouTube or any other means a recording of our meetings, and there's no accurate reflection in minutes of what actually transpired for somebody to go back and review.
Okay, I think that's definitely something that we can go back to talking about with our Board governance stuff that we've been talking about for the last few, few weeks. I will say, the last meeting minutes, Ms. Gaiman took, so, because we had no secretary. So I was going to say, thank you for doing that. At least we have a minimum that we, of, of meeting minutes from that.
Anita, I did them the one before that, too.
Oh, was it you did before? Okay, I'm sorry.
So the last two sets of minutes were by us.
So we have, so yeah, so we've had two, two meetings where we haven't had a secretary.
And I appreciate that. And I'll revisit the discussion from the 13th, but there are a couple of things that are very problematic about what was used as far as context by Ms. North. And one is bringing up the reenactment video, which had not been filmed yet when that email was.
So can we, can we say this? This is for new business. This is not, if you want, if, you can, but that's not right now for, we're talking about the minutes from September 27th.
I'm sorry, but it had to be said, because no one on this Board had an issue, other than Jeff, with what took place. I was concerned with some details, but I wanted to research the details before saying anything. But to not take accountability for what was written there is problematic.
Can we, please, okay, we're going to, can we have a vote on, please, for the minutes? Because we're going to talk about the minutes right now for September 27th. Are there any other questions about the minutes from September 27th? Can we have all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, moving on to the workshop minutes from September 27th. Can I have a motion to approve? Are there any questions on that? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. Moving on to the superintendent report, the second reading of Board policies. So do we want to take, last, at the last meeting, we took them all individually. Would you like to take them all individually? If so, can I have a motion to take them individually, or do you want to do all together?
I'd prefer to take them individually, just because I think there are some topic areas that we're not unanimous on.
Yep. Okay, so let's go first with policy, can I have a motion for, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'll, can I have a, a motion to take all of the policies separate, please? Okay. So can, so policy 006.1 will be first, since that's listed first on the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the second reading of 006.1? Are there questions on, questions and comments on this one?
Sorry, I'm just touched up there.
This is for our, for the, you're, okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
Is this 600.1 that you're doing?
Yes.
So did the first reading actually?
Well, 006.1, sorry, yes.
Did that, did the first reading take place on the 27th or the 23rd?
On the 27th.
Because it says here, first reading, September 23rd.
It was on the 27th, at the board meeting. So are there any other questions?
Who, in addition to the school president, would have the ability to terminate a director's attendance through electronic communications? Because I don't think it should be just one person determining if there's an issue, cutting that person off from a meeting if that's how they're attending. Because our technology at this point really doesn't fulfill a lot of the issues that are present in this policy that could cancel somebody from attending the meeting.
Mr. Khan, you seem like you had something to say to that.
Well, even in those areas where, say, the Board President is vested with the discretion to make a decision, as a matter of law, five or more Board members can say, no, we're going to do it a different way, right? Any, any Board member could then presumably make a motion to say, let's, let's continue this, and if, and if five or more Board members agree, then the Board President would be compelled to follow that.
Shouldn't that be in the policy?
Well, I think it is in the policy, though. I can't, I can't open the policy for some reason. Don't answer why. I actually believe it is in the policy right in the beginning. You can open it, and I can't.
Here you go, it's right here. But it doesn't say, it does say just the Board President, so if you.
I remember what Dr. Muslin was talking about. I think there are, there are caveats in all of them. At some point, it says that while the Board President has discretion, because as the officer running the meeting, the Board can choose to, in various circumstances, and Mr. Khan referenced, it's just a matter of Board practice, while the Board President can choose to, for instance, call an exec session in the middle of the meeting or not, if the rest of the Board, Mr. Khan's nodding, if the rest of the Board says, we do or do not want to call that meeting, it's the Board's prerogative, and that is a standing, an order and understanding for every Board proceeding, but for the ease of going with a business meeting, item by item, the Board President typically, Mr. Khan, you go ahead, please feel free to weigh in. I am not the solicitor, but that has been my understanding. I'm, I'm grateful you were nodding along with me there, so.
Right, so what the policy does to establish the default, obviously, you can add the other thing, but the law is, five or more of you can direct what happens in that.
I understand that. It just doesn't acknowledge that in the policy, I mean.
Well, we can, we can put that, I mean, that certainly can be, that, that language could be put in there then, is that right, Mr. Khan? We could put that language, that it has to be Board President and/or majority of the, of the Board.
Well, I would phrase it a little differently, because the importance of the policy is to, is efficiency, like, the Board President's just going to make the call to keep the moving going, keep everything moving, and so that default should stay the way it is, but we can certainly add some language that says, a majority of the Board can at any time, by motion, you know, overrule the decision of the Board President.
Does that, Mr. Leisad, is that what you're asking for?
I just, I, I believe that the law that overrides an individual's decision should be acknowledged within the policy. Usually, you know, there's an asterisk here, which was very difficult to open, the number one, after he was appropriated. There's hyperlink to that. There should be some, there's some subscript of what state law is regarding a majority of the Board after.
Right, and again, just so we're clear, it's not that they have to agree, it's that the majority, this policy will allow the Board President to make the initial call. That's her default. Board President is empowered to do that. A majority of the Board can say, whoa, 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 we're going to overrule you here, and say, we want to do it differently, and we can certainly add language. Okay.
Are there any other questions? Yep, Mrs. Gaiman.
Is that a substantive change?
I know, I was just thinking about that. I don't think it is, because it literally is a, a statement of the existing law.
Right, that would be my understanding. It would just be.
By me, it does not constitute a substantive.
Yeah, and I think what Mr. Leisad was referencing is, instead of putting the footnote there to actually write the footnote and the asterisk in the policy, so it is, in essence, already there, but for clarity's sake, to actually reference it, that.
There are a number of legal references which are very well thought of.
Right, but that's the one you would like embedded.
Based on one that I was aiming to get open, there was nothing there of majority of the Board.
Sure, sure. Okay, but, okay, thanks, that answers my question.
No, it's, it's definitely in a key policy. We'll just, we'll just get it, we'll put it in here as a second. I, I'm looking at 006, because obviously, this is 006.1, which follows 006. I can swear somewhere in 006, but I can't find it quickly, is the statement that you're looking for. So I can't, I can't find it, but listen, I read it 15 times, I know it's in there. Absolutely know it's in there. I just, maybe not in point one, but.
Well, there, there is a thing about presiding officer.
It says, it says that any, if the presiding officer feels a certain way, the majority of the Board must be relieved with him or her. That, that's the language that I'm looking, somewhere in there it says.
So we can, we can add that. Is there anything else, any other questions?
Comments or questions, or where are we at on that?
We're on, oh, sorry, 006.1. Whatever, whatever, comment the questions, where we are.
Commentary, right, or, not just questions?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, I, I had issues with it last time, I won't belabor it. I had the same issues again, the main ones being having the agenda, the commentary split between the beginning and.
(inaudible).
Not that, just the first one.
This is.
Okay, gotcha. Yep, I got no problem with one.
Okay. Okay, all right, so, so we don't have a substantive change, so can we go ahead and do the second reading then, the approval for the second reading? Okay, so all those in favor of the second reading?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. Now, moving on to policy 006. Can I have a motion for this, to approve the second reading of 006, please? Thank you. Are there questions and comments on this one?
Yeah, same, yeah, like I said, we discussed this last time. I continue to note, I, I have an issue with the splitting up of the commentary time and, and dedicating it towards any one agenda item. I appreciated the opportunity to hear from three Board, three people, members of the community tonight, to which are, were about DEI, and one was a, one would, one would have been on, on task, and the other two would not have been, but we're all better for having heard from all three of them, would be my view, and allowing them to say it early as opposed to possibly being here at 11 or 12, it might be the case. I also have an issue, I, I feel like the language changed slightly, and I don't have the, and maybe someone can correct me if it did or it didn't, because I had asked about the language about excluding people under the public decorum paragraph. I still, if it changed slightly, it now says, any name-calling, cussing threats, noise-makers, that's pretty awesome, like cowbells, like, I think we should totally have cowbells. Or, or signage of any type is prohibited. I think name-call, I mean, some of that, I really think is, is probably First Amendment problematic, not that maybe someone would ever challenge it, but I think throwing somebody out for name-calling is ambiguous, and certainly, as I said before, I think people should be able to come here and name-call, because I think that's sort of how people feel better about their community and their participation. When you can't come and, and sort of vent a little bit on a Board that you think has made bad decisions, you know, on either side of any given issue, you know, then you resort to kind of being ticked off and, 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 you know, kind of mulling over it. I mean, I think there's something to be said for coming in and being able to say, you know, hey, you knuckleheads, you got it wrong. And, you know, I, I don't have an issue with that, and, and I know Priya said, you know, she, she's, and I admit, late, some, some members have gotten it more than others, but you know, I've been on here a while, and I've been called plenty of things over the years. And I got rid of the, you know, I voted to get rid of the German language, that was a big deal, the German classes, we, we voted on sports issues, we closed Lower Milford, and I mean, there's been all kinds, you know, contentious things come up when people let you have it. We just got yelled at over the, I, I got it pretty good over the stadium grass just last year, I think called out specifically for being an idiot. And that's fine, because maybe I am. But, you know, I think that's just important, and I think we need to have a little thicker skin, and, and I really think it's problematic to try to, and I kind of doubt Anita or anybody else would throw somebody out, you know, I think they'd have good judgment on this, but I don't like it. And those are my two main issues with that particular policy, and, and that's it. Thank you.
I, I do think there's value, though, to utilizing civil discourse. I mean, I don't think, I think there's very constructive ways to voice opposition to what's happening in, in the district, you know, based upon actions of Board members, certainly myself included, without calling people names. I mean, I, I do expect that behavior at school board meetings while people are frustrated. My expectation is that we should be setting an example for others in the community, especially students. I certainly would not want my children to be at a public meeting calling other people names. I wouldn't accept that from them, and so I do feel that, and realistically speaking, I don't think people are going to get kicked out willy-nilly. I mean, I, I do think it's something that's going to be pretty judicious, because I don't, I think most of us have developed a much thicker skin, myself, in particular, I feel this past year, but I think there's, it should just be constructive. I mean, why, why is that too much to ask of adults? I mean, why, why is that too much to ask of adults?
My thinking here is that, this is, it's a business meeting. It's a professional business meeting. There are sometimes students here, there are sometimes students at home watching, and as much as, I, I don't necessarily disagree with, with Jeff, that, you know, there's freedom of speech and all that, but it, it's a professional meeting where children can attend, children can sometimes watch from home. I, I don't think that, I think that there needs to be a level of respect and decorum, and that name-calling is unnecessary.
I, I have to say, I'm just a little confused, only because, Jeff, are you saying the part of, that says, that is prohibiting or asking folks not to cuss, threaten, or use noise-makers? That's the part you want to be removed? Cussing, threats, and noise-makers?
I, I think I made clear at the last meeting that threats and obscenity are, are, are not appropriate. What I'm, what I was concerned about is what remains, is things like name-calling, you know, what is, what is name-calling to any one person? I mean, you know, that, I think it's a very prob, I don't think that's a very good legal term. I don't think that's a very good term to have in here, because I think it's open to all kinds of interpretations. So, somebody comes in here and calls us a tyrant, right? I mean, they called the King George III a tyrant, right? I mean, and, you know, so you're not to get all crazy on people here with history, but I mean, one person's tyrant, one person's name-calling is somebody else's, you know, legitimate political speech.
Well, I think that's why it's vague, right? You don't wanna say exactly what people can or can't say.
No, I think, no, I think on First Amendment rights, I think we, I, I don't think it should be vague, because it, it limits people's ability to speak. I mean, by the, by a threat of being removed, not just from this meeting, but it also reads future meetings, which again, I don't think, I'd like to know how that could happen. I mean, I, I just think the whole thing's suspect, if it was actually challenged, but I.
I guess what I would say, though, Jeff, it does, Mr. Dimick, it, it says could result in removal. It doesn't say you instantly use a, you know, I mean, that's why I think it's left, that part's left open as well, right? It's not necessarily gonna, I mean, I think it would take a lot, quite frankly, for that to happen. And I do think that would be a situation in which multiple board members would probably be able to override, let's say, you know, once again, to, to your point from earlier, Mr. Lysat, that, you know, the board president makes a decision. It's out of their discretion. I think others could certainly weigh in and say, you know what? I think we'll just let it pass, just like one word here and there, but there's, I think, certain situations in which it's gonna be a little bit beyond.
It, it is.
Sorry, I'm looking at that way. My apologies, but, yeah.
It, it, it is, I think, probably in a way intentionally vague, and it, there is also the opportunity that, you know, like we were talking about, I think Mr. Lysat's point is good in that, because it didn't say it clearly, but it does say it in this, is that, you know, the presidents can decide that somebody's gonna be removed, or, but it can be over, overridden. And it's still, nothing, nothing is set in stone by just one person making that decision. And I do think that having the, this kind of as a, as a general, you know, kind of guidelines and policy for us, I think is, is appropriate for us to have. I do believe, you know, when there are students here, students listening at home, I do think we expect them to behave a certain way, and I think we would want to model that behavior.
Everybody's right. Everybody, every one of the board members is, is right. And Mr. Dimick is right, that there are some constitutional concerns with some of this language. And it's PSBA's recommended language in a lot of regards. In implementing this policy, should it pass? The important thing to remember is this is, and you were alluding to this, this is a business meeting, it is a limited public forum. The primary purpose of the meeting is to conduct agency business. When anyone disrupts the ability of the board to conduct their business, First Amendment no longer applies. So, if this policy gets passed, it should be applied with that kind of standard in mind. Is it now actually making it hard for us to get the business done? And if so, then it's fair game.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have a couple of comments. You know, I view that language more as kind of setting the expectation for, again, civil discourse, which I think everybody can agree is, is how we should know, and, and the importance of modeling our behavior and, you know, our language in, in these business meetings, especially for our students. We wouldn't, you know, we tell our students in school, no name-calling, right? Don't call, call each other names. It's kind of a, a basic expectation that we have. So, but I do appreciate hearing the legal concerns and, you know, potential issues related to that in terms of, of executing it, so. And I've also been similarly conflicted about the dividing the public comment. I, I really am conflicted, because I, I do think that, you know, it has the potential to, you know, I mean, nobody's gonna be prevented from being able to share their comments, so it's not shutting down the ability for people to comment, but you know, there may be situations where, where some, somebody isn't able to, you know, stay for the duration of a meeting, and it, it could, you know, just have a chilling effect on, on that. If, if somebody had something they wanted to say, and it wasn't on the agenda, and they couldn't get there, so I am conflicted about that. I do think it's important to set the expectations in terms of, of the way people conduct themselves at the meetings.
Mrs. Parsons?
I'm sorry, trying to get this here. I disagree with M.A. about that. I do think that, as to the point, this is a business meeting. I think if people comment on the agenda items at the beginning, they will inform us on how we vote. And then afterwards, they can discuss whatever they'd like. Yeah, I don't know what else to do, though. Yeah, I'm not doing that. So I think that it, it works better if they comment beginning about the agenda items, and at the end about what they feel like. And I do understand that sometimes that might take a long time. Hopefully, our meetings won't go on forever, they get used to, and, so, that's what I think.
Mr. Lysat, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I've gotta agree with a, a lot of the comment. I, I want to hear from the public. And to have them wait until the end of the meeting to comment on something that they've taken time out of their evening, away from whatever else that they're doing with family, and to come here and to ask them to sit here for 90 minutes, two hours, three hours? They don't know how long it's gonna take to be at the end of the meeting. I, I don't see an issue, and as Jeff mentioned, now, two of the comments tonight under this policy would not have been heard, and they may not have waited around to be at, they may have, I don't know. I just don't see a need for it. I don't see a need for this entire policy. And I will be voting against it, because it's just not needed.
Does anyone else have, I, I, I'm gonna admit, I am waffling on this, the agenda items, speaking the, the pre and post. So, I do think that allowing, if people can't stay, I do think that it is an issue, and I don't think that, I, it's a hard one, I, because I do think that it does make the meeting, it, it gives the meeting, the business meeting, it informs us, right, and so we can kind of get our business done and then move on to what is next. But at the same time, I, I, I don't think that, I think it's gonna be rare that we're gonna have, you know, 30 and 40 commentators like we've had in the, at a few of these meetings. So, moving forward, I would say, I would be open to having the comments be open at the beginning.
Dr. Mosleen had brought us this, well, I remember him bringing up this policy, and I remember him telling us all that this is pretty much how almost every board does business, because, again, it is a business meeting. And this is how most boards do business. I see Mr. Khan shaking his head, yes. By that standard, I, it's one of those that it's a big change, but I feel like in the long run will make things a little bit smoother and better.
So is, if, I guess my question is, if we go into, if we approve this and decide that it doesn't work, or that, you know, how does that, you just amend our, amend our policy?
Well, yes, you can always amend a policy, but short of that, and it's, whatever, this is gonna be in the weeds of Robert's rules a little bit, but you have the authority to suspend the application of a policy at any given meeting for any given time. It requires a motion and a board vote, but you could, for example, with the, if you saw there were only 10 people total wanting to comment, you could say, um, let's let everybody comment at the front end. Can I have a motion to suspend the policy? Get a motion in second, you can do that. It is, it is certainly true that almost all districts with which I work have two separate public comment periods. Just because that's a custom doesn't mean it's, you know, right, or that you have to do it that way, but that is certainly the most common approach.
I have to say, I, I like that idea of being able to say, have that caveat that, that if, that you can change things. So would that be some, you know, language that would have to go in, or you, it's just, it's just that you're saying it could just.
No, it would be at a given board, like this one. You would say, hey, there, there are only 12 of us here, can I, can I get a motion to suspend policy 006 as it applies to two separate comment periods?
By the way, any board member could motion, you make a motion, Jeff, that you want to suspend the policy, it's voter on. Highly dangerous suggestion, but I, I, I like this knowledge I'm gaining tonight, you know, I mean, three minute, and, let them talk for 10 minutes, I mean, all kind, you can, it's gonna be good.
You gotta have five votes, Jeff.
I know, and I'll never have five. That's always my problem, Larry, that's always the problem.
But, yeah, you can suspend.
Okay, that, that actually, I think, having that, that, you know, that knowledge, that makes me actually feel better about the, about doing that.
That makes me feel really better about it, too, because I think often as board members, we come in, we have an item on the agenda where, you know, it's really important, it's gonna take us 20-minute discussion, but we'd really like to get to it. And some nights, when it's fresh in our minds and we are fresh as individuals, maybe having that intricate numbers, budget, policy conversation in the beginning of the meeting, and then having an hour and a half of public comment about how we totally messed up the football field, that would present valuable information, but I think the order in which sometimes, you know, and, and that, that makes sense, and I'm really happy to hear that as well. Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Khan.
Any other comments?
I just wanna go back to the issue about the language, just because I do, again, I'm somewhat conflicted about it. And I'm just wondering if, because the point that you made, Mr. Khan, was that if the, if the behavior becomes such that it's disruptive to conducting of business, and I'm just wondering if maybe we should tweak the language to reflect that, incorporate that as part of the, the criteria, that it's, it's, you know, behavior is such that it's disruptive to the conduct of, of business.
It's discretionary, M.A.
I mean, that just seems.
I agree with Jen, what, what Dr. Smith just said. So what are, which, we're talking back to the, are you talking about the, like, the name-calling, is that back, is that where we're back to?
Yeah, the public forum.
And I just gotta ask, did PSBA use the word cussing, right? Like, can we put profanity or obscenity in there? I mean, it's a little embarrassing to read.
Thank you.
We can make that change.
So what I'm, I guess, and Mr. Khan, you can kind of weigh in on this. What I'm hearing is that the policy is in place, it's very, it's intentionally vague in some areas. We can, and that we have some ability to work around some of these issues that are coming up. Regardless, but we can still have the policy in place, but can still work around some of these issues that we're talking about right now.
Well, I'm hearing two separate issues.
Right.
One, one is about the, the name-calling. And on that one, I, I, you know, it's entirely up to the board. You could certainly add a sentence that says, in implementing this section of the policy, it is understood that, you know, the standard will be whether the behavior is disruptive. That, that could be a sentence you add.
Okay. It sounds like that might be something that people want to be added?
I'm fine with the language as is. I have, my hesitancy is in having parameters for a board meeting that are less restrictive than those we would have at a sporting event. I mean, if these are the standards we're holding our students to, then we should hold ourselves to those same standards, and I think this does that as written.
Minus the cussing. We want profanity, yes.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Yes, minus the cut, yeah.
And then the other, the other issue being the agenda item, the public comment for agenda items, that sounds like that's something that can be altered at any time during a board meeting. Okay, okay.
I guess my concern with that is just because there is a workaround, doesn't mean we will utilize a workaround, so. I would be, I, I guess the question I would ask, could the workaround go the other way, where you suspend non-agenda item comments to the end?
That's your policy.
That's, that's what, that would be the policy, right? And then the workaround is that we wouldn't, we wouldn't, because there's so few, and that we would allow all.
Right, but I'm saying if this is our, if we made the policy that comments could be any topic, first comment or second comment, could we at the beginning of the meeting do the reverse? Because I think it's easier to restrict than to go open.
So, my, my, I, I would disagree with that. I, I would say it's easier to amend the current policy than, than to do what you're saying. I, I think, you know.
Well, either way, it's a current policy.
Well, it's a policy, but, but you're, you're establishing, I, I mean, guys, let, let me say this for the folks in the audience and you, you guys, this is gonna, this is gonna be an issue for one or two meetings. After that, it's gonna be a fact of life, and everybody goes on. Tonight, I can, I can point to Doug, who was nice enough to, everything Doug said was about the agenda. No problem. And, and let's just, let's take it a bit further, maybe Doug at the end of the meeting has a comment that's not on the agenda. I mean, you, it's easily followed. So, if you don't want it, take it out, but this is not a big deal. It really isn't, and you can suspend it at any point, so I, I think.
And I was gonna make a slightly different point, which is it's actually both politically and arguably legally easier to expand than to constrain. So I'd rather have, oh, here are the rules, but we're gonna expand, and have, here are the rules, but for tonight, we're restricted. I actually think that's harder.
And this is minor, too, possibly, but the first reading in all of these are wrong. They all say September 23rd, which there was no board meeting that had a reading. So they should all say the 27th, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have, we already have the motion, can I have a, a vote on the second reading of policy 006?
As, as amended, so profanity would be amended, and that's all that's gonna be amended. It's September 27th, yes, they have that. Those are the changes.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
No.
No. Can we do roll calls, since I, yeah, Mr. Lysat?
No.
Ms. Nord?
No.
Uh, Ms. Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Parsons?
Yes.
Desai, yes. Ms. Gaiman?
Yes.
Ms. Gaiman?
Yes.
Mr. Dimick?
No.
And this, Dr. Serene?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to. Well, let's, policy 903, can I have a motion for the second reading of policy 903, please?
So, Anita, just not, not, not to, like, rehash this, this is a, this is a totally new policy from PSBA, which I would call the sign of the times. Well, the policy that you just voted 5-4 on has been an established policy forever, 006. This is new. So, so there's some statute in here, and, and remember, we talked about this last meeting. A, a lot of this is, is up for revision, and there have been revisions made. For example, in the, in the third page, in purple, you can see the purple. Purple are the revisions that was made. So if you, if you're looking on your, if you're looking on your, I don't know if you can pull that up at all, but if, but if you're looking on your computer, you see in the second page, we, we changed, I gotta use Nina's glasses, okay. So we, we actually took out. So we, we actually took out taxpayers of the district, or school district, or any representative, so, so, or anyone representing a group in the community. You took that out last time. You took out an entire paragraph last time. You took out the next paragraph. Uh, no, no, participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must, that's it, that's it. And then the, the next one, uh, we added, same topic, agenda item, yeah, that was the one we were discussing, uh, participants may speak more than once on the same, uh, agenda item within the same visitor comment period. No participant may speak more than once in the second visitor comment period. And, and remember, I think that was because there might be two different agenda items.
Right, that was to give, uh, participants an opportunity to speak on two different items.
Right. So that's the changes you made.
There's a, there's a, I have a, I just had a question about one of the paragraphs about if there, the board determines that there's not sufficient time at a meeting for public comments, the comment period may be deferred.
Yep. It's up to you, now that's, that is statute. Let me see the statute, yeah, so there's public.
Oh, Mr. Khan has something to say, too, it looks like.
So, um, this remains a bit of a, this language has been around for a while on some policies, and it remains a bit of an open question. It absolutely, um, is harder to do if you only have one comment period. If you've gotten through your public comment on agenda items, you're good to go. Um, so, if you then need to cap that second comment period because time's getting late, you can defer that. To me, I'm not sure, frankly, where PSBA thinks we have the right to defer public comment on agenda items before a vote takes place. Um, what it should say, and what I've advised on the, like, twice that this has ever come up, is that both the comment and the action gets deferred to a later meeting. Basically, we're done for the night. Um, so.
So there's basically no voting without a comment period? Is what you're saying then?
Yes, although, although you can read the room a little bit. So if there's one particular agenda item that we know is the source of all the comment, uh, you can get away with tabling that agenda and doing the rest of your business, and then coming back. But you sort of have to, you know, you have to, it's fact specific. But that, I mean, again, this is more like how the, how the policy gets applied. I've only ever seen twice where a, a sitting board in the middle of a meeting essentially said, we, we gotta cut this off at this point, um, because it's going too long. It does not happen often.
And I would think that if it hasn't happened in our past, uh, year, that it probably is unlikely to happen. I think all of us really value our community and, and what everyone has to share and say, and the fact that they do take the time and come out, and, um, you know, as late as it gets, for all of us, it also gets that late for them, so I, I appreciate the fortitude.
And remember, look at the delegation of responsibility. Remember that if the presiding officer's ruling is disputed, Bill, I've finally seen where this was, it may be overruled by the majority of the school board members. So even though, let's say the presiding officer says, I'm, I'm cutting comment, and you say no, five of you say no, you're not doing it. I think it's good to have there, um, whether you use it or you don't use it, but you still need a majority vote to do it.
Um, but I, I, I think you do have a good point, does it, should the language, um, also say that if the public comment period is, um, deferred, that the agenda item should, would also be deferred?
If it's the first. If there were a leave way, I would say yes. And that's why PSBA, there isn't really an elegant way to do that. This is more in the nature of, keep it in mind. I don't think you're ever gonna use it, but if you ever did, it's not, we wanna make sure that you didn't cut off public comment on an actual voting item. But on the anyway.
Right, exactly. Absolutely. And to Dr. Smith's point.
Yeah.
I don't know what our record is, but.
Right, I don't, yeah, to Dr. Smith's point, exactly.
There's, we've had, I've never seen any inclination on anybody at the board to, to cut it off arbitrarily based on time, so.
However, I will say that we are writing policy for at all points in time, and, I don't know, as a community member, sometimes you and I sat in the audience years and years ago at the same time, and I will say that, that has happened to me as a community member wishing to speak in the past, and I'm talking many, many, many years ago, but Bill, I said, is nodding his head and saying, yes, he remembers. So I will say, but we are writing this policy to anticipate those instances where, you know, where, where it's kind of uncharted, and this is that we don't ever expect to need it, but if we do, we don't ever expect to need a fire drill, but we have them just in case. So I would say that that has happened in the past. And Mr. Khan can see, you know, in other boards, perhaps, he's observed.
Not often.
No, not often.
And to Jeff's point earlier, it's a little surprising, but we don't actually know what the full contours of this are under the law. It doesn't get tested that often, it just doesn't. Um, I, I, the one board meeting where this came up, instead of, you know, and you won't find this anywhere in the Sunshine Act, instead of cutting off public comment, it was a particular item, everybody knew what the item was, public comment went for a little while, and then the board president said, all right, I see there are still fifty of you, everybody who's against this motion, raise your hand. Everybody who supports this motion, raise their hand. We're gonna, you know, so that board knows, but we're, don't keep coming up and saying the same things. Is that, was that legal? Nobody in the public complained, they all got their point across. It's not in the Sunshine Act, this is really more about how you apply. Uh, the policy is a PSBA policy, that language is newish, um, but, uh, you know, you wanna be judicious in your application.
I'm inclined to leave it out. I'm, I'm inclined, I'm inclined to leave that language, this, this part out. Could you read the part, your, um, if the board determines there is not sufficient time at a meeting for public comments, the comment period may be deferred to the next meeting, or to a special meeting occurring before the next further meeting.
Thanks, thanks, I understand what you're saying now, thank you.
Yeah. I just think we haven't, you know, I think we've been through meetings that have gone long, and, um, we've listened, so. But I'm one person, so. Are there any other questions, concerns about this one?
I would be inclined, as you are, to leave that part out, but, you know, that's only two board members, I don't know if that would be a substantive change or not. But.
I would agree, take it out.
Out?
Yeah.
Is that, yeah, is that a substantive change?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That would be a substantive change. All right, well.
Only means it goes on to the next agenda.
For another second reading.
Yeah.
How does that, okay, uh, how does that apply if we have one, we have, because we're voting on these separately, we have now have one policy that is oh oh six point oh, that has language that perhaps, well, I guess this is a new policy, ah, never mind, question removed, totally, I'm good. All right.
Um, are there enough people that, um, just show hands that would want that, that piece removed?
I'm against the whole thing, so.
I was gonna say, I, I probably would, um, because I voted no on the last one because of the public comment, I would probably not suppose, but if it were, but I would support removing it.
Okay. So does that leave us on a vote, then, for the second reading?
Yeah, just don't vote on it, and we'll bring that.
Can I ask a question, since we're postponing this vote anyway? Can I just have a, a question, so I'm not bringing up the next time for pass, postponing it again? The last bit of purple language on page two, that says, um, no participant may speak more than once on the same agenda item within the same visitor comment period, no participant may speak more than once in the second visitor comment period. Am I to under, the way I read that is, one individual could sign up, let's say we have six agenda items to vote on, one individual could sign up six times and could speak for eighteen total minutes, a single individual, Mr. Khan is nodding his head, but in the second comment period, each individual will be limited to a total of three minutes. So one person could sign up to speak on every single voting item, and potentially however many voting items we have, could speak for, you know, is that, is that, is that, am I interpreting that correctly, Mr. Khan?
That is, yes, that is the way that policy language is written, and I will tell you, some districts have amended it, but there's no clean amendment there either, because, yes, is the short answer to your question.
Okay, so that's what that means, as opposed to, then there's no clean way, the, I, the, the way we currently conduct ourselves is that you have three minutes to fit as many policies in as you.
And that's, and a, and a number of districts that have adopted this policy have actually changed that language to conform with that practice. You get three minutes on agenda items, period, no matter how many it is. Um, you are correct, I think, in that someone could make an argument that that language says you get three minutes for each agenda item if you want it. Now, it is supposed to be, I, it is supposed to be an actual agenda item, so you can sign up for sixteen agenda items, but do you actually have anything to say on agenda item twelve? Because if you don't, your comment should be cut off.
Right, right, and if it's not pertinent, your comment should be, but, yeah, I'm, that was just, that's, I just wanted to understand what we were voting on, so that was my reading, thank you.
So how does that leave us, we're, we're, for the, because we're gonna do another second reading on this one, so, um, we do not vote, or we do vote on this?
You're not voting on this.
Okay, so we can.
Really, essentially, that superintendent admin is bringing you back this revised policy for a, a second reading.
Okay. Uh, policy, um, next is policy one oh four. Can I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy one oh four? Do we have questions on this one?
Just as with all of them, they need to be changed to September twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Good catch, Bill.
Anyone, any other questions, anything?
I have the same question I had, I think, at the last meeting, uh, which is, um, is this an expansion beyond, uh, what, uh, federal case law requires, uh, for employment discrimination? It's not an area of law I, I know very well, but, um, just in reading these off the top of my head, I didn't think all of these are, are necessarily currently recognized, um, as that, and then by expanding it, I would suspect we'd, um, it would be opening ourselves up to, to potential for greater litigation around, uh, some of these issues. I saw, at the last meeting, I think I had requested, uh, that, uh, we provided an email or some type of brief on, on that issue, I didn't, I did not receive that. So I continue to, uh, question whether, and again, if this is a PSBA document, you know, PSBA has its own agendas, um, that, uh, you know, that I think we always have to keep in mind when we read any of these, um, policies, and so, um, that's my question, and without having it have been answered, I'll, I'll be voting against it, uh, in, in lieu of greater information.
Specifically, as it relates to employment, uh, the Supreme Court has ruled that Title Seven's definition of sex includes, uh, gender identity and sexual orientation. So that is the law of the land in relation to employment. We are awaiting, uh, the same reasoning to be applied to Title Nine, the appellate courts that have looked at it so far have applied it also to Title Nine, and, uh, Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission also has, uh, put out essentially an official guidance document that their interpretation of the word sex in the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act also includes gender identity and sexual orientation. It is only a guidance document from PHRA, uh, but that is the state of the law in, in Pennsylvania.
What about genetic information?
Genetic information is in the PHRA at the moment. That's a protected category.
So all of these are currently protected under federal law?
Well, uh, I don't know that there's a federal, there may be a federal law on genetic information, I'd have to check. It definitely is, the others are in the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, so they'd be state law, and, and schools are public accommodations under the act.
So all of these then are required under the statute?
In my view, yes, there is an open question on Title Nine's application to gender identity and sexual orientation, but we have publicly predicted that when it finally gets to the Third Circuit of the Supreme Court, they're gonna rule the same way on Title Nine that they already did on Title Seven.
But that hasn't happened.
It has not yet happened. Every appellate court that has looked at it has come to that conclusion, but the Supremes have not yet. You probably remember the Gavin Grimm case, that got, um, that was the decision of the appellate court in that case, and the Supreme Court declined to review it, and they declined to review it after making the Title Seven decision. So we're confident in our prediction, but you are correct that it has not technically happened.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, um, all those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Policy, on to policy one oh three. Uh, can I have a motion, please, for the second reading of policy one oh three? Um, we will change the date to September twenty-seventh on that one, um, and are there any questions or concerns about this one? Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, thank you.
So, so these are, because you adopted, uh, one oh three and one oh four, these policies are out of your, uh, your policy book, simple as that?
So that's, are, um, you're referencing the, to the, the motion to rescind board policies three forty-eight, four forty-eight, and five forty-eight. Can I have a motion for that, please? Our, um, questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Didn't, ooh, real quick, sorry. Didn't we table this last meeting?
Now we test.
Oh, okay, so the second reading's.
Because we have the second reading, yep. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Okay, the, um, the next agenda item, uh, deals with, um, the gentleman to my left in technology, and, um, uh, if we have to get a recording secretary that isn't paid to do the job, like, the administrative assistant to the superintendent is paid to come to board meetings to record the minutes, it's not necessarily paid to be the secretary of the board, but she's to be the secretary to the secretary, if you would. Um, however, Colin and, and some of the folks that, that, um, might come here are spending very long hours, and, uh, we, uh, we figured, Hannah was involved with this, that a thirty dollar per hour stipend is much more accurate, uh, to pay folks to be here until twelve thirty in the morning or later than just saying, we'll give you a hundred dollars and you spend seven hours in the night with us. So that's what this is about, we'd ask for your approval for this.
Can I have?
Why wouldn't we just pay them their hourly wage?
Um, I, it's, it's probably higher, I guess.
Hourly wages?
Prob, probably higher.
Okay. Why I asked a question?
Can I have a motion to approve the substitute?
Oh, actually, you know, why wouldn't we pay them their hourly wage if it's higher?
Well, so it's, it's up to you, we were, uh, we, we had first agreed to a stipend, and then we kinda, uh, took a look, Hannah, you did some calculations, you did, uh, you took, um. There was a, there was a method to this madness. I mean, I think these individuals have all been salaried, right? No, uh, well, wait, uh, some of them are salaried.
Right.
Right, sal, salary to work eight hours a day, you're beyond, you get into, you get into some labor issues, and that, hence the stipend. Shane is taking the notes tonight and is not getting thirty dollars an hour, I can tell you that right now, so, so Shane, we're, you're right there with us, but Hannah, what, I know we used some calculations.
So we actually took a look at what your board secretary's, um, annual salary hourly rate was, and he used that as a range.
Yeah, right, okay. I, I, guys, I think this is only fair, up to you, your call.
Uh, can we, uh, let's go back to the, can I have a motion first to approve the substitute technology technician and substituting recording secretary's, um, hourly rate, please? Okay. Uh, are there any other questions? Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions?
And, and the next item is to eliminate the hundred dollar stipend that you voted on on August ninth, that's, uh, we're changing.
Can I have a motion to eliminate the, uh, the previous stipend of a hundred dollars a night, please? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, thank you. Next one. Board secretary approval. Oh, this is going to be fun. So we talked, yes, yep, we talked a little bit about this already for workshop, and we've kind of referenced it a little bit. We need nominations for board secretary.
I'd like to nominate Jen Smith, who happily volunteered for this at the board workshop last week, or at the last meeting.
Second? So I appreciate the nomination. And like I said, I'd be happy to fulfill the role, not necessarily for the minutes recording, but for the signing portion. However, I did hear some concern from the board that we're really looking for somebody, as it says, to go through till May 9th, 2022. And my term ends in two months.
So, and David could just, I'm sure, back me up, but the statute says that in, at your May board meeting, you elect this for a four-year term. So that's why we took this up to May. If Jen does it, you just have to pick another board secretary in December, which is, it's up to you. Whatever. You can do whatever, whatever you like.
I think for right now, until we have administrative assistant or a board secretary, or with all the shuffling we're going to have going on with a recording secretary and everything else, and with reorganization happening in December when Jen's term is up, it makes sense for all of that to occur at the same time. And I think it's one less thing we have to figure out and juggle right now. I appreciate her stepping into that. And I think this all, we have to reorganize a lot of stuff in December in the coming month anyway, so.
Are there any other nominations? So I need a motion to close nominations, correct?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to close nominations, please? All those in favor? Opposed? And now, wait, wait, no, 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 not official yet, not official yet. I got a vote. We have to, can I have a motion to approve Dr. Jen Smith as our board secretary? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Congratulations.
That's a $1 stipend.
Wait, again, what about the abstentions? Okay.
It's all pristine, it's all pristine.
Are you doing the next one or am I doing it? Okay, okay. The next one is the motion to approve the memorandum of MOU between SLSD and SLEA for the vision program. Can I have a motion, please? Are there any questions or concerns about this? This is, has been approved. This is part of the bargaining agreement. And I don't know whether Skamen or Miss Gangway want to comment on it.
Just the, no, the only explanation here is that there was a term that wasn't precisely defined in the CBA, and this defines dependent for us as it applies to vision. That's all. It doesn't change anything. It's not substantive. It just helps everybody understand what the word means. It's a definition only.
All those in favor? Opposed? And abstention? Okay, moving on to student discipline. We have.
Yeah, I think, do you want to take this one?
We discussed this in exec?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're good?
Well, that's what, this is.
This is just a waiver to expulsion for an individual at the high school. I worked with Lieutenant Khan on this. So it's an alternative expulsion, working this at the RRL in terms of a very communicable process, all things considered.
Thank you. So, yeah, no, so do I kind of have a motion to, for the, to approve the expulsion waiver, please? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, moving on to Curriculum 5A. Motion to approve the attached 9 through 12 student trips for 21, 22 school year. Can I have a motion, please? Questions? I think there are some questions.
Yeah. Why are they, here's my question. So if we say yes and approve all of the student field trips that are all to be determined, are we just saying that whatever is decided that is going to be okay? So like if, under art, it says university, colleges, school districts, location to be determined, can they choose anywhere and spend whatever and do all, whatever they want? Because we approved, we approved the field trip. It just says to be determined, which is kind of a little nutty.
I'm laughing because that's a great question. I've never seen this in my life. I got to go to Shane. I got to go to Shane for it. Good, Shane, you're up. Typically, there's a date on it, but that's my past.
Specifically for policy, the superintendent has the authority to approve field trips. So any field trip that's a particular day's trip, I come to support the approval process. So you create approval. And so there's an approval form that's submitted to the principal for review, and then as well as to the particular aspect of it, there's kind of an approval. So there is another layer of approval. You're really keeping informed as far as what these current, these schools, a lot of these trips at these schools, especially clubs, it's very difficult to tell me exactly what types of trips are going to take as far as the requirements of student.
So Shane, let me say, let me say what you just said. You said that ultimately, this will be coming back to the board once we get dates on.
Well.
To the superintendent.
If it is a critical day's field trip, there is not specific details in that pre-approval process. Yes, it'll come to a point where clubs, there is no specific process.
That's when the superintendent comes in to approve. Okay, I got it, okay.
I guess, could this be in information only? I just feel, I mean, I understand the majority, the vast majority of this list is just to be decided. Could this be, I feel a little, I don't know, I feel a little odd voting on it, on nothing. It just seems, it seems to lack, I just, help me out, Mr. Khan, because this seems to be for information only, and then the superintendent could.
But there are a couple of specifics in there, right?
There are, yeah, like a dozen, maybe?
So, and in the past, this has been much more detailed as far as what, the time, where they were going, and what they were seeking to accomplish when they were there. And sometimes we've approved it after they've gone like speech and debate, because there was a national or regional or something, and we've approved it just as a matter of course. But this is the only time I can remember seeing one that, just guessing, 90% is to be determined, which I'm not sure why that would even come to us to be approved when none of the details that are important are listed.
For the ones that are, and I don't have the attachment open in front of me, for the ones that are identified, is there the detail that you're used to seeing?
There's very little.
No, not even that, yeah. Not to be disparaging, I've just never seen this spreadsheet like this before.
Well, the list is almost identical to what we've used in the past. The difference is that it's put into a spreadsheet like this, so that you can clearly see the TBA's marked on it. But this list is what has been dropped to the board by previous schoolers. There's not a lot of change to the pre-approved list that's forward.
I was going to say, I was going to say tomorrow, I was going to fire Shane because he definitely told me that this is, I'm kidding, of course, I'm kidding. He told me that this is the way that we've always done it. So there we go. Shane, I'm kidding. I don't have that power anyway. These people have to do.
So if you don't want to pass it, we can bring it back, no problem. Get it, get more detail up to you. And, well, it really doesn't matter because you can do it retroactively. But in this list, are there any that would be taking place prior to the next board meeting?
At their point, really, the authority under board policy, if it's getting to the superintendent's field trips, we bring this forward, you know, it's kind of changed from year to year as far as the assistant superintendent is in place in the direction of the meeting, as far as whether or not to support voting on them or a informational item. We brought this forward as a vote tonight.
Is there, is there a set budget for field trips? Like, is there a cap that's already built in?
A lot of those trips on the list are funded to parents.
Because if the current policy allows the superintendent to make the call, then the only thing the board would ever need to approve would be the additional expenditure of funds. And otherwise, it's informational only.
And that was, that was my question, is what, of all of this, what is the school district paying for? And what are, we not, like, yeah, why are we even doing this? But I think that's what the disconnect that we're having is. I think that the ones that we have approved in the past that had the level of detail that we're all recalling were ones that had funding attached to it, and that's why the detail was provided. And these other ones were probably just provided, and now what the expert is going to talk.
So there are line items in the high school budget, at least for field trips. So for instance, there's a field trip, I believe, to Arabian College University on October 21st, which is prior to the next board meeting. There was another field trip that just came in this morning, and because of the 24-hour, right, or, you know, public, publication, we could not add that this morning. But it just came in this morning, and it's not, it's another college, is it for our CTA class that's going to occur before the next board meeting? So these come in quickly, and it's based on where we're going in the colleges. Like, for instance, we just got a robotics approval to attend a practice competition in New Jersey. So as far as the curricular courses go, there is a line item that is, that has been set aside in the budget specifically for field trips. Last year, we turned that money back in because there were no field trips. This year, we're starting those up. Sometimes, like at the sales, they'll show, they'll have a theater production, and our kids can go walk, frankly, to the sales and see a show at a reduced rate. But we don't have those tickets become available until the last minute based on their sales. And so some of these trips come up pretty quickly, which is why in the past, as long as I've been here, we just give you a list of possibilities. And that shows how it's been. And as they come in, we still have to fill out the form. We still have to get my signature. We still have to get Shane's signature. We still have to go through the approval process. But this is information that it's a possibility that some of these things may come up. That's all. But any monies that it would cost the district are already budgeted. They cannot exceed their budget, and when they run out of money, they don't go on the field trips anymore. That, or if it's a club, they have to fundraise. We do not fundraise or charge for curricular field trips that would be attached to a class.
So is this then, basically then, it is really for information only for us, really? Yeah, okay. So, Mr. Khan, how do we handle this? We just.
No.
No, no.
Motion is withdrawn. You've got an informational item. You don't have to take a vote on it.
Okay.
Assuming who made the motion?
Okay.
Michael, Michael, huge area for you to look at next year. Huge area for you to look at. Because I could spell the word M-E-S-S for you, but I won't. I won't do that. Yeah, this is, this is different. Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, where we are, yep, sorry, yes, I'm getting there. So can I have a motion to approve the bills list, please, dated October 11?
I know it's. All those in, oh, sorry, any questions? I have a question. Sorry, I don't know. The Levin Legal Group, that's listed with respect to bills, that's the group that we have employed to handle the right to know request, correct?
And the investigation.
And the investigation, right. So I just wanted to point out for those who may be listening, that amounts to $19,764. If you add that together with the remainder of our legal costs, at least if I looked at this correctly, that's at least $36,000. Just wanted to point that out.
Yes.
Which is very similar in cost to the infiltration study that we're going to be hearing about. So.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Dimick?
Well, if we were fully transparent with the public, it wouldn't be necessary. So that's, those costs are incurred by us because, in my opinion, we clearly have done things that we were caught doing that we said we weren't doing. So.
It's not that I don't believe in transparency. I'm just pointing out that while it is important to have in that type of check in place, because that's how you learn about processes that were flawed, I do believe that. And it was a wake-up call to us. I think there's also a difference between that, there's a distinction between that, and continuing to drive home a point purely to be more, I think, vindictive at times. I feel very strongly that stuff like this needs to be constructive. And I'm losing my power to speak more eloquently at this later hour for me. But what, what pains me is that while I do believe that, Mr. Dimick, it hurts that we can't, we're losing so much with respect to money, which is hurting the students more within this district. And it wasn't their fault that, you know, that occurred, right? So that, that's what, that's why I bring it up, because my kids are also in this district, and I wanted to be able to give them certain things that we've been talking about for years, and that we will unfortunately now not be able to do.
I think, I think it's also really important, and please don't tell Mike Levin that I defended him, and I don't know anything about him, but it's really important to recognize that it is not possible to get a right to know request and simply say, here's everything we got. We cannot do that legally because inevitably it will include confidential information about students, confidential information about personnel, that we are not just shouldn't be providing, but are legally prohibited from providing. So that means every time a request comes in, somebody has to take the time to review all that stuff and redact it. And because it's a legal issue, it winds up being your outside counsel for a lot of that.
Would it be helpful for the sake of transparency? Because I appreciate both arguments made by Mr. Dimick and Dr. Shereen. Would, is it possible for the public to, for us to publicly display a right to know, update, something to consider about what types of requests are coming in and the frequency and those individuals making the requests, so that we're all on the same page about, you know, what, what is necessary for transparency, and perhaps what is an overabundance, or so that we can look into the community and see how this tool is being used as a check and a balance, but also how it could potentially be drawing resources? Is that something that any district ever does from a transparency sake? Because both points are valid, and more information is helpful.
Yes. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting this is the case here. But there's no ambiguity that the right to know law has been weaponized in certain areas. I'm not making a judgment about whether that's accurate here. And yes, there are absolutely districts who now have, as part of their monthly report, here's the right to know request we got, here's the identity of the requesters, and here's how much money we spent this month. And absolutely.
Dr. Musili's taking notes. Is that going to be added to Dr. Mahan's list, Dr. Musili?
Yeah, it is.
Thanks for answering that so clearly, Mr. Khan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, David. I did not know that. I guess it's, I guess it's public information, right, that who requested it, and what they are. And Hannah, we ought to create a website and do that. I think that's, I think that's excellent. It is, people will see for transparency purposes what the questions are, and how we, you know, can, I guess, sometimes takes a while to respond to them. But really, interesting.
And we as a board can also see those questions that are being asked, and perhaps we can make an effort in our communications to be more clear about those items. So that could be a useful tool for the board as well.
Yes.
To reduce costs that could otherwise be driven to our students, but also have the transparency piece in answering those.
David, if they're, if they're denied, do we, can we put that on there too? Can we list like the whole, I guess, public information, right?
Yes, absolutely. Right to know requests themselves are presumptively public records. And yeah, you absolutely have the right to post all that.
Denial, why they were denied?
Yeah.
Are there any, any other questions or comments on the, on the bills? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Moving on to 9A, motion to approve the contract, contracted transportation carrier agreement for the 21, 22 school year by Norman's Bus Service? for the 21-22 school year by Norman's Bus Service? Are there any questions or concerns about this?
Uh, I just, you know, I, I know that we don't have the, all the staffing in place for the answers and information that we usually get. Um, but typically, we, we get at least a rundown of how does this compare to the previous year costs? So do we have any sense of, you know, what kind of inflation we're looking at here? And anyone?
I don't know, Hannah, can you, can you talk to this or this is Todd's area?
Right, which, which I, I understand again, we're, we're doing the best we can and I appreciate everybody's work. I was just, as a point of reference, I know costs are going up exponentially for everything. Bussing is in, in short supply and, and in high demand, so.
And drivers are in short supply. But I believe this is a continuation of a contract, Jen. And I don't believe this is costing us any more than what it did last year or the year before. Uh, we had buses, might be a difference or, or what have you. But other than that, the contract is the contract. And, and that's another issue. Uh, Hannah is working with the bus contractor to keep this open because we, we might have to bid it until Mike gets on board and, and see if we want to continue this some way or if we actually want to go out to bid. But this is a continuation of a past contract. That helps.
All those, um, any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed and abstentions? And it should be noted that Mr. Lysat stepped out. Um, nine B, this looks like this might be, you're up, Larry, and Dr. May, Dr. Mahan.
Maybe, uh, Mike, you wanna? This is the, uh, this is the, uh, soil infiltration.
Um, let, I'll, let me do the motion first and then we can have discussion. So, could I have a motion to approve the soil infiltration testing quote provided by Cowan Associates for the middle school stadium? Okay, open for questions and comments.
So, I don't know, Mike, any commentary on your part or?
Yes, um, I can have representatives tonight reveal the answer to this question. But, uh, as we look at timeline, uh, after our discussion, uh, during our last meeting, we look at many, many different aspects of the project, financing, uh, thinking about the scope, uh, being concerned about, uh, supply chain issues and timeframes. And as we look at all that information, most immediate decision, uh, that must be made, stay on the timeline, would be related to the field. And so, based on that, and, and that, that first action would be associated with an infiltration test. Uh, and listed on the agenda tonight, the infiltration test for the stadium, uh, field project. Because we thought in discussions, that was probably the one that was the most critical at this time. Uh, these tests, I think it's important to note, are different than those discussed in the past in that these have a shelf life of a year or so rather than the other ones that had shelf lives of upwards of a decade of, you know, in terms. So, uh, if we approve this infiltration, uh, study tonight, it keeps us on track to begin work at the middle school stadium come fall of 2022. And so beyond that, I would actually prefer any questions about, um, the test itself, infiltration. I, I do have one about just cost. I know we looked at this was combined together, uh, a number of different tests. It was all hard, seemed to cost enough. So perhaps we talked about, is, is this going rate for this type of work? And any other questions that board members may have this week?
Um, good evening, Scott and Matt, we're Cowan Associates. I'm, I'm here to ask any questions, but, uh, the world. So essentially, we've been working on, uh, we're the civil engineering project. We're working on the land development approvals, um, in case for the, the middle, middle school stadium project. We're at the point where, um, according to the land development approvals, um, there's certain testing that we need to do to get information, not only for our own formal management design, but when we often make submissions to various reviewing agencies, uh, with talking township, um, the PEP, the conservation district, the NPDS permits. This information is really critical to be able to secure, um, the permit that's moving through, uh, the land development process. So we, we have been working on, uh, forming our center. Um, and we're into the land development process. I mean, we're actually putting that on hold. Um, but as part of that process, we did make submissions to the tougher talking township to receive reviews from their, um, engineer, their, kind of, technical consultant, uh, and some other entities. Um, and they were asking for specific information, uh, with regard to the site. Uh, this campus is located in a carceral area, limestone, from the sinkholes. Um, there's a lot of geologic issues going on underneath the ground on this campus. Um, and there were a lot of questions from their consultants about what's happening and where we're putting formal management and trying to incorporate the design. So knowing that, if we're incorporating those, um, tests in this proposal, um, and that's where some of these items are, the ground penetrating radar, going for, including infiltration testing, all that information, uh, would be requested for the, for our student project. Now it's been becoming part of the, uh, um, uh, middle school stadium project. And given the timeframe that we're dealing with now, since it's a bit, some delays, uh, we're really up against, uh, up against the, forget the projects approved in time to be able, you know, this right now, I understand it's time when we want to bid it in summer, uh, get out of the way, get everything prepared, do the construction in, uh, November next year. Time frame for getting the permits, to get an NPDS permit is somewhere in the range, minimum eight or like nine or 10 months on average. So, uh, fact that we start now, nine months in the summer, we want to be getting it. And so, um, it's important to be able to get this moving. Um, the addition, you know, weather's coming into play once we get into winter, doing infiltration testing, doing this other, um, testing becomes a little more reliant on the weather. If you have freezing conditions, things like that, if the land stuff, so. That, that's the reason for, um, being here tonight and, and asking for approval to get, get started on this. Um, you know, given, you know, I guess, so many other projects. Um, but this one specifically, with the timeframe that we're dealing with, if we don't get it started really soon, um, it's gonna delay the project. I just won't be able to get it done for you in the timeframe. I'm gonna be back here next summer explaining why we didn't get a permit.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Okay, um, usually I'm okay with this. Um, I guess what, what kinds of, because I know in general, we've certainly learned through this process that costs go up, you know, every, every time you push something forward with inflation and so forth, um, the cost of a project goes up. So based on, you know, the quote that we have before us, if this were to be, you know, delayed or postponed, um, obviously you wouldn't be able to break ground, I understand that. But, um, what kind of anticipated cost percentage-wise would you, would you say may happen on a yearly basis?
Oh, I, I don't, I, I honestly don't think the cost would go up substantially. It's not, you know, revealing professional purposes here, not dealing with material costs from oil and steel and things like that. So I really don't have to take the cost of these, maybe higher than wait six months, um, for a year. Uh, you know, like what the normal, normal free percent or five or something like that. Um, you know, some of these prices, um, are reliant, it's, uh, you know, the GPR and drilling. And we have drill, you know, um, drill rates that, you know, our office doesn't have. We, we sub that out. So some of these costs are incorporated from those, uh, subsolutions that we use. Um, but again, I don't anticipate the cost. We have to, you know, it's really just to keep that, that, that timeframe available.
But you're speaking specifically for the infiltration testing costs, not our scope of project costs, correct?
And it's correct, that's, yeah, that's, it's the proposal in front of you. Yeah, that this, maybe the project costs, uh, again, those, those I, you know, referred to, per the, uh, the, uh, part of the, they wanted to thank, but I don't see that going to go up, could go up. You're able, you're able to make or, or whatever.
Hello, Ian?
I did notice that I had some email back. We, we have these old, as a group, uh, we've had a certain code. We broke them out and the aggregate amount was much higher than the original. If you talk to me, why that price amount, you know, previously actually impacted?
Yeah, there's, there's two things. The one is we did add tasks in here, the ground penetrating radar task, we, we added in here. Um, because, uh, we wanted to get the, the GPR out back and it gives us the information that we need. We may not need to do all the forms that we originally proposed. So it has a cost savings there from the original proposal. Uh, but really it's splitting, you know, it's splitting into, into three different, um, private, actually. You got, um, some scope advantage. Originally, our original proposal would do the entire campus for, for the EAC, um, ELEB as well as the stadium. So when we get, you know, the, um, some of the, the subs essentially also, if you get the drill rig out here, um, there's just gonna be mobilization costs to get, to get a rig out. Get them out here, having the, they hold for five straight days, see if the camera come out just for a day and a half and have to come back for the, the, the mobilization first and do it three times, the same thing with the GPR, um, both re-mobilization. So, you know, there is, there is an advantage, uh, getting them out here and just banging out the work for all three. But, uh, that's, that's part of it.
For all three site, what did you mean by all three?
For the three different, uh, I guess, the three different quote-unquote projects. Uh, the forming our center, we're, we were considering a project. Um, the yard official served field that, that ELEB was a part of, separate project, quote-unquote. And then the middle field stadium is a third project. You know, for this analysis, we knew that we were gonna need to be doing that for all three. Um, so the original, um, number we tried of was being able to, was basically incorporate all that work for, for all three projects.
Right, that's been broken out now?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
And, and just to confirm, I believe that what Dr. Man said, the shelf life on, so this, um, the results of this would be valid for a much reduced period of time, about a year, is that correct?
Yeah, especially the infiltration testing portion of it, um, for the, for that NPDS permit for, for PBT that we need to get, um, that, that they like to see, uh, infiltration testing with a whole of around a year.
So if we were gonna break ground on all three at the same time, it would have made, that, that's, it made sense to keep them bundled. Um, but the only way we can move forward on this particular field is to do this one individually.
Correct. Are there any other questions?
I don't know if, uh, just out of, and I don't want to go too far down this road, uh, because of the time. Uh, but, um, more generally, I'm, I'm in favor of, of the, uh, of looking at the, the samples. Um, but the scope of work at the middle school stadium, um, the, the track needs to be replaced now? Is that because it's, uh, uh, more or less a safety issue at some point running on a track that's got holes in it and things like, is that what's going on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, I noticed. Um, and then obviously you have the, uh, the bleachers. Um, I continue to be, um, of the opinion that it makes sense to move the track from, uh, the, um, so if, if I'm persuaded on, if you want to move forward on this and we want to have, keep chasing bad money after good money, um, if we're gonna move forward in a way, uh, likely, then this means we're probably also gonna be potentially spending money on the upgrade to the middle school stadium. Uh, otherwise, why would we, uh, be doing this? Um, if that's the case, um, I think it does not make a lot of sense to have the track at the middle school stadium. Um, it would make more sense to have it located over where the turf field is, uh, um, and so, um, and that, that gives you more, it gives you, for a lot of reasons. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there, that, uh, uh, something to think about in regards to the middle school stadium, about where we put that track. Um, because, uh, it also depends then where you put the bleachers and everything else. Um, I just want to point that out as people continue to think about, uh, how we, if we're looking at redoing the middle school stadium, I'm just pointing out in my mind, it makes sense to look at potentially moving the track. That's my, my only point.
And moving the track where?
Moving the track likely over to the high school, uh, where the turf field is proposed. No, no, I know that. I'm not saying that, I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I'm just literally saying in my opinion, I think, since we're talking about the middle school stadium and, and maybe the scope of where, if, if we're gonna do this, we're kind of signaling that we're going to do something at the middle school stadium. I'm just pointing out that in my mind, if we're gonna do something at the middle school stadium, I would like at least the folks that are thinking about whatever, whatever it is we're going to do there to be open to the idea of whether we need to have the track there or whether we can have the track elsewhere.
So, um, I'm just, I'm kind of just curious, why, why moving the track to the high school and not in the stadium?
Oh, I think it's better to have the, the track here, uh, for FIZED and, and use of sports, uh, co-located with the high school. And I think, um, if we, you know, over there, you see how close the bleachers currently are to the building. Um, reality is, you know, I think, uh, it's always a much better stadium experience to have, you know, if you were to redo it, mu, many stadiums do not have tracks inside of their stadiums uh, because it just expands how far apart the bleachers have to be. You gotta walk over the track, the track gets more usage because people are constantly on it that don't have anything to do with running track or on it because of all the events that are going on there. Um, so I, I really think for a number of reasons, it makes sense to, if you were to do both projects, um, you would think about potentially moving the track. That's all I'm saying. And I, I didn't know if that was something that was being considered. It's late at night, I don't want to open up a whole can of worms about it. But that's just a, a thought that I wanted to throw out there for, for people to be thinking about. But otherwise, I'm in favor of doing the sample there.
Uh, Dr. Man had his hand up.
By, by doing the infiltration study tonight for the middle school only, do not envision doing the high school field track project at all until the earliest would be 2023. So there will be, I think, a timing issue there involves, you know, track.
Right, right. Exactly.
If, if there was an interest in discussing the interaction between the two projects and the second infiltration study on the high school, also be, right? I said it was down the direction before one day.
Yeah, the, what Jeff has mentioned, it's, it's a very valid consideration. If you go back to the focus groups that were done by the previous architect, that, along with a whole host of other things, were brought up. And in, in what I remember of the output of that study, the stadium track, that situation at the middle school, we almost have to commit to to keep the track operational. And the co-curricular, well, middle school uses that track now for FIZED and for a variety of other things. The vast majority of stadiums in the Lehigh Valley have a track around them because of the stands that you want for that. The concept of the high school field has always been more of an everything but football field that could be co-curricular, can be used by marching band, could be used as a practice field for football if needed, but would be all of your other sports, which in the spring helps with boys and girls lacrosse not being pushed off of a field that they could use for games when track meets are occurring. So having the field over here that's a turf field, that's much smaller, less stands, the whole thing is smaller in concept, creates a lot of opportunity as far as practice, play, and just utility at the high school level. And it, it seems like the way that we're proceeding tonight, if we were to approve this, we were to approve this, we have to commit to whatever's going to be done at that middle school to be done at the same time, and to not do the track, I don't think would be an option. So we're kind of committing to that at this point. If we wanted to add a second one, well, we could always do that, but I don't know that that would be, you know, financially wise, nor is it something that we'd need when, from a phys ed perspective, they can run on the field just as easily as running on a track. The track is predominantly there for me.
To be clear, I'm not advocating for a second track.
I didn't think that you were, Jeff.
I know, I know.
I've been with you here for ten years on this board, I get that.
Just joking, I was just joking. No, that makes sense.
Are there any other questions? Okay, all those in, oh, sorry, Dr. Smith?
I was just going to ask a clarifying question, but we are not approving the scope of the stadium project, so this is, this will apply to however many stands we put, or whether we include the Ds or other elements.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Mann, is that?
Yeah, this, this testing is going to be necessary for, no matter what we do in there, we're going to need to get any permit, we're going to need to be doing these studies. The only thing that's potentially changed is the size of like stormwater based things. So, you know, if it's going to be an artificial turf field and full leaves and large bleachers or any more stormwater man, and if it's a natural turf field and, you know, a lot of no leaves, all the testing, all, all this stuff is still going to have to be done, it's just moving to the next step when we get into the binary, if we have to change.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to human resources, anyone opposed if I take ten A through I altogether? Can I have a motion, please? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Would somebody go get the sheet to see if there's anyone signed in?
So before, before we get out of human resources, excuse, oh, did you take?
Yes.
So, so let me, let me take a minute to thank Mary, Mary Ferris. Mary's last day is, or?
I was going to ask.
Okay, good. I'll, I'll go first.
But you go, you go ahead.
You go, you take the, you do cleanup, you do the, you do the, you back forth, you hit the back foot. I, I certainly want to thank Mary. In the four months I've been here, Mary's been a, a huge asset. She's been in the district well over twenty years, twenty-three, Mary, twenty seventeen years. Okay, I thought, I thought it was ninety-something with Joe. That's what I thought it was, but that's okay. Resident of the district and obviously served as principal, an educator for a long time, and retiring, going off to the beach, I hope somewhere, but Mary from, all right, that's fine, that's good, good with me, good with me. There's enough room in Rehoboth to come down and you're, you're good. So thank you, Mary. I, I, I want to thank you, and I appreciate more so the last week or two, and, and the help you've given us when we're down people, and you're in there working as hard as you can, and I know you'll keep doing that until Friday, when the final bell rings. So, so thank you, Mary, I, I appreciate it, and we appreciate you.
I will add to that, he kind of took the thunder here, but, but, you know, Ms. Ferris, thank you so much for your service to the district in so many different roles, and we're looking forward to still seeing you in the community or maybe down at the beach, but I, I can't see you, but thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done, and we will probably still be contacting you every single day until Friday, your last day, so I appreciate it.
And she is now a approved athletic event worker, so we will see her on campus all the time.
Yes, so we will get to, we will still see you. Thank you. Moving on to other business, communications, new business for information only, and visitor comments. I will note under for, for information only, that it does mention that Dr. Mann officially starts in the district on October twenty-fifth. Visitor comments, there is one comment, Mr. Duck Durham.
All pertaining to things discussed tonight, I hope, on the issue of right to know and the predictive nature of right to know, and revealing the private student data, Mr. Solicitor, part of our right to know determined that the solicitor was fed out to protect student data in the first place, when you revealed private data to Dr. Allen, potentially jeopardizing federal claims, because it was a violation of federal law. Also, I would remind you that I believe that the district has lost all of the right to know appeals that went to the Office of Open Records in Pennsylvania. So the public is asking for reasonable information as has been defined by the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records. Responding to an earlier comment respectfully, there should never be different levels of kindness given to students based upon their race. That is racism. No reasonable person, we're talking about PEI, no reasonable person is opposed to teaching the value of cultural, religious, and ethnic diversity. No reasonable person is opposed to providing students with the tools necessary to achieve their best outcome. This school district does an exceptional job of providing resources to students to excel and grow and learn based upon their circumstances. Our administration and teachers should be commended, not questioned. No reasonable person is against inclusiveness. No one should be excluded from activity based upon being male or female, based upon their race, based upon their religion, or based upon their political ideology. PEI is a philosophy that is often based on critical race theory, as was the case with Dr. Allen. Thank you, Miss, the community is paying attention. Trust me, our teachers are already attaining mindfulness training using CRT-based terminology. Our elementary teachers had a session in which the term white privilege was used three times. Several teachers walked out of this racist training. To state that our teachers are in need of this training suggests that they are not currently wholly mindful of being sensitive to students' cultural, ethnic, or religious differences. I have great faith that that is not the case. In relation to name calling, community members against the teaching of CRT have been called racist by members of this board. I believe there are very few more disgusting things to be called. Shouldn't you follow the example of your new approved policy and sanction members of a differing ideology being called racist with no evidentiary support?
We do not have a need for executive session. If I have a motion to adjourn, please. Thank you.